Take it away.
Hello, welcome to the December 2nd, 2021 meeting of the City of Boulder Planning Board. We have a quorum tonight with only one member absent. Thank you Cindy for guiding us into the rules and regulations for our virtual setting.
My pleasure. I will start and I'm going to put some slides up here and share them. Forgive my clunkiness, I'm not as, I'm not as good as Jean at doing this. I'm going to do the best I can. She's so much better at this than me. Okay, everyone. This real quick. Welcome to the planning board meeting, we're so glad that you're here. We are aiming to keep these meetings respectful and orderly, of course. As such, we have some specific protocol for the meeting. The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and council, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. More about this vision and the full rules of decorum can be found on the participate in city council meetings page of the city's website. The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive, oh, I'm reading the same thing, forgive me. The following are examples of rules and decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during the meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, dehumanizing language, racial epithets, and other speech behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. Participants shall, or excuse me, participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by, which means, in this case, we don't necessarily have a sign up, but as you sign on, and if you have any different names, we may ask you to state your name. For the record, your whole name. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. As you know, we're all using Zoom right now, and when, oh, I'm sorry, someone's knocking at my door, scared me. When we are ready for the public participation, we'll ask you to raise your hand, and that can be found at the bottom of your screen. You'll hover your mouse or finger, if you're using a phone, at the bottom of your screen for the control panel to show up. Alt-Y can be used for your PC, or star nine for your phone. When it's your turn, the host, which is myself, will adjust the setting, and then you'll be able to see the option to unmute. You won't see that right now, so don't worry. When you do raise your hand, you may not see it at the time, but I promise you, I will unmute you. And I'm going to stop on sharing real quickly. Sorry, someone knocked on my door, scared me to death. Kindly note that the chat function is disabled. All questions related to procedures or the online technical meeting should be directed to me, the host, in the Q and A. I'll do my best to help you or clarify our procedures. All content-related comments or questions in the Q and A will be promptly deleted. The Q and A is used for only technical questions. It should not be related to anything that the board is talking about. The board is not going to look at Q and A. It is not part of the record, so it should only be used for technical questions. If there are repeated comments or questions in the Q and A that are disrupting my ability to do my job moderating the meeting, I will notify the board chair to issue a warning, and if it continues, I'll suggest that those offending the rule be removed from the meeting. And I really don't want to do that, so thanks for understanding that these rules are to be kept, to keep the meeting orderly and fair. I'm going to turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair, and thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. We have minutes to approve from the November 4th meeting. And unless anyone has comments on the minutes, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'm all second.
All right. Cindy, do you have that motion to approve the minutes logged with the second by Sarah?
I do, if you could just take a vote, that would be great.
Of course. I'm going to vote first, I raise it, show hands. Looks like we have unanimous show of hands to approve.
Great, thank you.
All right, well, I believe we're now at public participation. Anyone who would like to speak on anything except the main matter of the night. So I'll turn it over to Cindy to manage any public participation right now.
Thank you. As our chair noted, this is our general public participation section, meaning if you have anything you'd like to speak about that is not on our agenda tonight, is not related to our call, or excuse me, that is not related to our public hearing, which is talking about 1865 Collier Drive. Now is the time to speak. Just raise your hand, as I noted down at the bottom on your control panel, or star nine if you're on the phone, and I will see your name pop up, and then I will unmute you, you will have three minutes to speak. I won't start your time until you begin speaking. We'd like you to state your name and your address or the vicinity where you live is fine, and we'd love to hear from you. And so far, I don't see anyone raising their hands, but we'll give it another second. Oh, we do have one person raising their hand. We have Lynn Segal, Lynn, I'm going to unmute you, and you should be able to speak now, Lynn.
Same every time. We got Jacob leaving, that's a big problem. Got Marcy Guring leaving from Landmarks. That's a big problem. People are dropping like flies, Tipton report memories. And you know, I don't blame Jacob for leaving, because it's a, in this system, the way it's going, he wasn't postured to succeed here. And I don't think there's a lot we can do in Boulder to save the place, but we can stop doing things to make it worse. One of which is even beginning to consider the Millennium giving up our hotel for college students, 900 of them. This is our sales tax revenue. We already gave it away at the Olive? Why? I want to know from you guys, I write you all the time, I never hear anything back. Why would you approve CU student housing from an out-of-town, Case is the Name of the Place in Chicago for the Olive, and Landmark from Georgia for the Millennium? These are places we could make some money to pay for all of these extra people we've got here, for water, for rec centers, for infrastructure, all of this. The Millennium got a height subsidy, 55 feet, because they're on a floodplain? Well, guess what? My brother bought a house in South Boulder, in Martin Acres. It was out of the floodplain, the South Boulder Creek floodplain. At closing, he found out, oops, it's in the Bear Creek floodplain. Lost $2,000, he was able to get out of the deal luckily, but when you buy it, it's the Cracker Bell story, you know, you get it. You buy it, you got it. When, when Leah, or whatever his name is, the guy that's working on Folsom and Pearl, when he bought that block, he bought the Mecca with it. The Mecca is landmarked. You know, how dare they think that they can dwarf the Mecca and just cover it over? You know, no. Put it somewhere else? That's our sense of place. You know, that's, we don't have a landmarks theme park here in Boulder. These landmark properties are representative of the sense of place that this, this place has. Let's see. Do, do you know my time, Cindy? I don't see a marker.
I do, you have 10 seconds left.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have a marker, you know, like.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm just not, yeah, as, as good as her.
And, and the tech, no, that's fine. And the technical difficulties need to be addressed somehow. Like, if you can't do it in QA, then how, how do you address, like, is there a phone number I call if there's a technical difficulty and it's not at my end? You know, I need to know stuff like that. Anyway, we got water problems, and we got a whole nother campus here, and we need to have an integrative process determining what each body that we approve for every development in this town is going to use up in all the infrastructure, and how many we want to choose to have here. And then you can make good decisions on what happens here, and then the Jacobs of the future are going to stay. So.
Thank you.
I don't think it's unreasonable what I'm asking. Thanks.
Thank you, Lynn. I'm going to ask if there's anyone else who has any comments they would like to make at this time. Peter, I don't see any other hands raised at this time.
All right, thank you, Cindy. We're going to move on to item four now, discussion of dispositions, planning board call-ups and continuations. I believe we have one call-up item. Subdivision of a 48,803 square foot property, 100 Pawnee Drive. Anybody would like to call that up, or raise any questions, now's the time? All right, Cindy. I assume you have logged.
Yes, I have, so.
Moment.
To call, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, you're good, you got it. So we are moving right along the main event, as they say, item five. Public hearing and consideration of proposal to subdivide an existing 19,035 square foot lot within RL1, 1865 Coler Drive into two lots. Case number TEC 2021 00019. I'll hand it over to staff now.
Thanks so much, good evening, members of the board. Carl Geiler, our senior planner, will present the analysis from staff this evening. I would also note that we have an array of folks from our civil engineering division on hand tonight to help respond to questions as well.
Thank you, Charles, good evening, board members. Tonight, we're going to discuss the proposed subdivision of a property at 1865 Coler. This is a call-up public hearing of the subdivision. So just as an overview of what we're going to discuss tonight, I'm going to talk about the basic subdivision process in the city of Boulder. I'll talk about the existing site and zoning context around the property. Talk about the proposed final plat, that's before you tonight, the key issue related to compliance with the subdivision regulations followed by our conclusion, the staff recommendation. So jumping right into the subdivision process, anytime any property or any owners or applicants wish to subdivide a property within the city of Boulder, it does require approval of a preliminary plat and a final plat. And a lot of the final plat and subdivision regulations are derived from, from state legislation. So preliminary and final plats may be approved at the staff level if they meet the requirements of chapter 912 subdivision. So subdivision's a bit different than what the planning board typically sees, like in a site review or a use review application where there's discretionary criteria. In this case, subdivision requirements are more prescriptive. They really relate to specific standards on zoning, engineering requirements, and if applicable, public improvements. So the public notice requirements of section 943 have been met in this case, which is noticing of properties within 600 feet of the property. There was a preliminary plat that was approved in April of this year, but when that was, was reviewed, there has been some opposition from surrounding property owners that we've attached to the packet for the board's review in attachment C. The issues that people are raising relate to drainage patterns in that neighborhood, impact to wildlife, and also changes to the neighborhood character. So when we looked at the final plat, we did review it against the subdivision requirements and approved the final plat on November 5th. So we did send a call-up memo to planning board, as we always do with the notice of disposition. We also notified neighbors, as, as we are required to do. In that case, a neighbor did appeal the staff decision on November 14th on the grounds of potential drainage impact to their property. So when a project is called up or appealed, it does require a public board, planning board public hearing. In this case, with the subdivision regs, it requires that the planning board act on the application within 30 days of the call-up. So tonight, it'll basically be a decision of the planning board of whether or not the proposed subdivision meets the requirements of chapter 912 subdivision. So here's a picture of, or an aerial of the, the surrounding neighborhood. You can see the site, it's, it's 19,035 square feet in size. It's an area in South Boulder, west of Broadway, that has a fair amount of topography leading up to the Flatirons and Chautauqua area. So you can see the subject site there on Coler Drive. The zoning of that particular area is RL1 residential low one, which is basically single-family detached residential units at low and very low residential density. So that's basically between two and six dwelling units per acre. So in the RL1 zone, it's, it's basically a 7,000 square foot minimum lot size that determines the, the lot, lotting pattern in these areas. So you can see from this slide, there is some variation in lot sizes. So we looked at some of the adjacent properties, it ranges from about 7,945 square feet up to 23,388 square feet. So a lot of variation in lot sizes there. This shows the existing site conditions, you can see the topography on the site, it does ascend away from Coler Drive up to the back of the lot. There's a, basically a 20% slope on this particular property. You can see the existing house that's in the middle of the property that would be removed ultimately and replaced by two homes if the plat is approved. So looking at the plat, this is attached in your packet in attachment A. The existing lot is, again, is 19,035 square feet. The proposed lot one is proposed to be 10,071 square feet, and lot two is proposed to be 8,964 square feet. So again, greater than the 7,000 square foot minimum, and consistent with the lotting pattern of sizes in that area. You can see along the Coler Drive right of way, there's also a five-foot dedication of right-of-way over the sidewalk area that's part of the plat. So again, if this plat were approved, it would be recorded with the county according to the conditions that are in the subdivision agreement, which is found in attachment H. It requires that no building permits be accepted for either lot until the existing house is demolished. The agreement also requires that there be an updated hillside remediation and restoration plan, and it also requires the reconstruction of the attached sidewalk prior to issuance of any of the building permits. So the key issue tonight, as I said, is, is the proposal consistent with the subdivision requirements of chapter 912 subdivision in the Boulder Revised Code? So we find that it does meet the subdivision requirements. We've found that it meets all the minimum lot standards for the zoning. If you go into the code and look at section 9-12-12, there's a long list of, of lot standards that apply. I'm not listing them all on the slide, but you can see that there's no waivers requested and that they would meet requirements, like, for example, access to a public street. Do the, the lots have 35, or I'm sorry, 30 feet of frontage? Is there no portion less than 30 feet? Yes, they do meet that requirement. It sets it up to meet setbacks in solar access requirements, and both lots would meet the minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet. So again, I won't go into all the standards, but we, we do find, going through those, we've, we've attached, attachment B, that we also forwarded to you right before the meeting with some updates to the language related to the Mylar requirement. I wanted to point that out, that the checklist that we had previously sent used old language from the code that was before we had updated the code to include the electronic submitted requirements that we're seeing during the COVID era. So the subdivision also meets section 91212A2, A3, A4, and A5. Again, attachment B includes those responses. Much of those particular standards really apply to larger-scale subdivisions. So if we see a, a new large-scale neighborhood coming in with multiple lots and dedication of right-of-way, public streets, public utilities, that's what a lot of those particular lot standards apply to. The standards that are of greatest concern for this particular subdivision are on this slide. So you can see section 91212A1I says the following. It says, "Lots shall not be platted on land with 10% or greater slope, unstable land or land with inadequate drainage unless each platted lot has at least 1,000 square feet of buildable area with a minimum dimension of 25 feet." So it also says, "The city manager may approve the plating of such land upon the finding that acceptable measures submitted by a registered engineer qualified in the particular field eliminate or control the problems of instability or inadequate drainage." So there's also another lot standard that relates to drainage, and that's below, it says, "Flood control and storm drainage measures are provided as required by the city's master drainage plan and in conformity with the construction and design standards in the, the city of Boulder Design and Construction Standards." So these types of subdivisions on properties that are greater than 10% slope are relatively rare in the city of Boulder, but we do see one every few years. And in such case, in order to meet particularly the first, the first standard here, there has to be detailed construction plans that are submitted along with reports, which I'll talk about here. So the city required that the applicant submit a separate technical documents application that demonstrates that two building sites accessed by driveways could feasibly be built consistent with those requirements that I just stated. The applicant was also required to submit a drainage report and a geotechnical report. So in this case, those are attached within attachment E, F, and G that show these preliminary construction drawings. The materials were reviewed as part of that separate application and were found in accordance with city requirements in the subdivision regulations as well as the design and construction standards. So one thing I wanted to point out is that these plans have to, you know, they're basically preliminary and have to show that these sites can feasibly be developed and meet our code ultimately when permits come in. So there is additional permitting requirements that are required. They will have to submit an updated hillside remediation and restoration plan, and they have to show consistency with this technical documents application. So the, these application materials were reviewed earlier this year and were found to be consistent, so they, they're, they would be approved assuming the final plat moves forward. Obviously, there's a lot of technical details contained within these reports and in the construction drawing, so we do have city engineering staff as well as the applicant's engineer present tonight, if there are any questions about these attachments. So based on this analysis found within the packet and as enumerated within attachment A containing the responses to, to the subdivision standards, staff is recommending approval of the final plat. You can see the motion language on this slide, should the planning board agree. So that concludes the presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Carl. I'm going to ask my colleagues on the board if anyone has any disclosures or ex parte communications. John?
Yes, I, I would like to just mention that I had a brief conversation with Carl over the telephone when this first came up, before it was called up. And I, I don't think that our conversation has, will have any impact on my conclusion tonight, other than what we hear tonight. So I just wanted to mention that I, I did have that chat with Carl.
Thank you, John. Sarah?
I actually have a question, not a.
Okay. You queued up.
Okay.
All right, then, I am familiar with the work of Sanitas Group as a consultant on another project, but I do not have a financial relationship with Sanitas and am capable of stargazing my duties tonight. Ella?
Thank you, Peter. Can you, are you sure that you can base your decision solely on the evidence that would be provided for this hearing tonight?
Yes, I can.
And are you sure that you can be fair and impartial?
I can be, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if we have no other disclosures, ex parte, we'll move on to Q and A for staff, and I will pass it over to you, Sarah.
Thanks. Hi, Carl, how are you?
Hi, good, how are you?
Good. I, I guess I have a question just generally about the, the rationale behind the 9-2-12A1I, the 10% slope limitation? What, I'm just curious, what, what is the rationale? And how, what are the implications that there is a, I, I want to understand the rationale, and then I have a follow-up question.
I mean, that's a lot standard that's been in our code for a really long time. It obviously governs a lot of the subdivisions that happened in the city for many years. The rationale is really that he doesn't want to create a condition where lots get platted for buildable sites, and then it's later found out that you can't construct a house feasibly or safely or consistent with code on those properties. So it basically puts the burden on the applicant at an earlier stage before the plat is even approved, to show that they can meet, set it up so that they can meet city standards on construction for, for drainage and foundations and access on the driveways and construction on the lot before the plat even gets approved.
So, and does that 10% limitation also limit where a house, the thousand-square-foot footprint can go? Is that also a component?
Not necessarily, the, the code just says you have to show a rectangular buildable area that you intend to put the house, and it has to, number one, meet setbacks, it has to be positioned to not violate solar access in the future. But then they basically have to show in that buildable area how they would construct the foundation for the building. So that's like what gets reviewed as part of those technical documents, that they can feasibly construct that and keep the area stable and access it.
Okay, and I'm sorry, one last follow-up, which has to do with the slope. In the letters that the neighbor, that various neighbors wrote, there was some statements regarding what seems to be a habit of, I, I don't know if it's in a covenant or is just a tradition of not building on the ridge, and I haven't seen the site, so I'm assuming the ridge is the western half of all of these, all of these parcels. Is that a, is that actually part of the decision-making for you all, or is that, can you just walk us through how you all?
It actually isn't in the consideration. We, the city basically applies and implements the subdivision regs, and then, you know, there are some neighborhoods in the city of Boulder that opt to have additional requirements above and beyond typical zoning requirements that are part of HOAs. So it really is the responsibility of HOAs to enforce those requirements, but the city doesn't get involved in enforcing covenants.
Okay, but, so I'm sorry if I'm asking you a question that may not be your area of expertise, but is there in fact a covenant or HOA for this area, or?
I've only heard from, from neighbors attesting to the fact that there was an HOA that had standards, I don't know that it's an active HOA now that enforces them.
Okay, all right, thank you, that helps to at least inform something, thank you.
John?
Yeah, and this is what, what Carl and I were talking about briefly on the phone, and it pertains to the HOA and covenants and how. Covenants and how the city addresses. Those sorts of issues. I guess my question is first. Were have you been able to determine whether there ever was an HOA even when this was first subdivided? And and what is the city's relationship with? With that HOA? If it exists or ever did exist.
Yeah, again, definitively, we've not done the research to determine whether there was or is an HOA or any covenants only. Through the, you know, the the commentary from from the neighbors. Again, it's not something that that we can consider. In our reviews from a legal standpoint, we have to make a decision based on what's in the the Boulder revised code.
Okay, well, thank you. And I guess also to pursue the point that Sarah was inquiring about. Later on, when an application comes for a building permit. Is there any opportunity for the city to? Require or suggest that the say the wildlife corridor that is not officially recognized by the city but. Exists in fact along the the ridge be maintained and undisturbed?
There are no lot standards in the subdivision regs that relate to wildlife corridor. So there wouldn't be a way that we could. Require that as part of this process or any building permit process.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right. See no other raised hands. I believe we are now ready for the applicant. So Cindy can.
They should be able whoever's giving the presentation. I understand it might be Curtis. You should be able to share your screen. If you have a presentation.
Well. I thought Brady was going to Burke was gonna do an introduction, but I don't see him, so I can run with this.
Oh, wait, I do see Burke in the waiting room. I didn't realize he was. Part of your group, so let me promote him. I apologize. I do. In our waiting room.
I think he will be speaking to the bigger picture and I'm here to talk engineering.
Okay, I've just promoted him and he should be able to speak and share his screen now.
And Cindy, will you be tracking time?
Absolutely. You will have fifteen minutes. For your presentation.
Guys, Brady Burke, the manager and co owner of eighteen sixty five. Color Drive and eighteen sixty five Color Drive LLC. Carl, thanks for the thorough explanation of kind of where we are today. I'd like to just do a brief. Kind of timeline review of what we've done within our due diligence. To date and then I'll hand it over to Curtis to. Give more of the technical information. So we started the process in October of twenty twenty. At that point, we had enlisted Scott Cox and Associates, which you guys can see. In the exhibit there to do a steep slope analysis. So they did full review of of the. Of the property with the requirements from the city. From there, our first response came back. Stating that we were required to do engineering drawings. At that time, that's when we brought in the Cinitis Group and Curtis Stevens. As engineer record to come in. And complete grading plans and stormwater management plans and just overall. Project documentation. That was in and from their next response, which was in March twenty one. Stated a requirement for a hillside restoration mediation plan. So we went ahead and hired Cinitis Group at that point to. Move ahead with those components. It was also stated at that time, I think we had a more detailed and Curtis can talk to this more. We had in the original submittals, a more detailed site plan. That showed the locations of the proposed homes. We were we were told to remove that because that will be studied at. The point of building certain building permit and the only. The only thing they were looking to prove is Carl said was. The thousand square feet of buildable area with the appropriate setbacks per the subdivision code. So we made those changes. I know that was something that was. Brought up that why do we? Why do we not have more detailed plans? And it's actually part of the code to do it that way. So we revised that, got that back in in March of twenty one. We then put together agreements to put financial guarantees. With the city of Boulder for the hillside remediation. And then later on for the. Another financial guarantee for the removal. Of the existing structure once final plat was done. So all of those components were completed. Also. To speak to the covenants, there are no covenants. There never was covenants on this property. There are covenants in the neighborhood. I live in the neighborhood. I know the neighborhood very well. But there are no covenants or were never any covenants or HOAs within this property. Also, I'd just like to speak to the. Wildlife corridor. There are setback requirements within building code. That we would have to meet. So in regards to the hillside. Or the peak and and other open areas, I believe that. The building code requirements, which would be the next step for us. Would cover a lot of that concern. I'll hand it over to Curtis.
Thank you, Brady. My name's Curtis Stevens with the Cinitis Group. I'm a. Licensed civil engineer who's been working in Boulder for. You know, twenty twenty, just over twenty years now. And been licensed in Colorado since two thousand and five. My folk, my firms, I'm one of the founders and principals of Cinitis Group and we focus on. Really Boulder. City of Boulder and Boulder County. I've lost track of how many times I've. Spoken to a planning board over the last twenty years, but. You know, we probably have, I personally have probably been involved in five to six hundred projects in the county and city. In the last twenty years and do a lot of. Both mixed use floodplain mitigation both for the city and for private developers and. Drainage water quality mitigation for both and. Also also do some single family. Specifically, I do a lot of hillside, single family and a lot of it in Boulder County. Which has significant hillside projects. Which does come into play with how we analyze these Boulder projects with the city as Carl mentioned. Honestly, these ten percent plus minor sub or subdivisions like this are are pretty rare. I I think this might only be the second one I've been involved in in twenty years. And the the city's code just basically defers back to. You got to get a licensed engineer involved and we got to go through the code process like we would on a bigger project for drainage analysis. And. One of the things that. We do, I do is kind of lean a lot on the Boulder County side because the county has a lot more. Guidelines for steep hillsides specifically with revegetation stabilization. Things Scott Cox, you know, addressed hillside stability slopes. Groundwater, which is was identified at around twenty feet on the site. We look at all those pieces of the puzzle. And. As Carl was mentioning, you know, this site has an overall angle slope kind of generally about four to one, which. Honestly, from a development in the Boulder and the surrounding area is would not be. Well, it's a hillside slope. I certainly would not call it a steep slope. For reference in Boulder County, you're allowed to go to two to one without engineering. Guidance on slopes. Four to one is. A slope we use regulatory wise for parks and stuff on turf and usable space. That's just kind of a reference. For this site. So now getting into the kind of the specifics since of what has been asked. With regards to the drainage analysis, so. You know, as as a as a licensed engineer, we're required to follow codes and guidelines. In the case of Colorado Front Range. You know, the city of Boulder has its design and construction standards that refers over to the Mile High Flood District. Formerly urban drainage. I'm sure you guys are aware of it. It's comes up with everything in the front range. Mile High through. Whatever sixty, seventy years now, I think, has developed. Front range specific guidelines that we utilize with the rational method for drainage. As well as they have a a front range or kind of car specific car urban hydrograph method. Those are the two. And that what's key here, these are the two code approved. Standard practices that we are required to utilize. In the case of this site being very small, we use the rational method. That is city of Boulder code requires the rational method for any site less than one hundred and sixty acres. CUHP can be used above that. That said, Mile High allows CUHP to be run for both. Anything down to zero acres like the rational method. Most almost every jurisdiction uses the rational method on smaller basins and a reason for that is. The rational method actually provides more conservative. Higher flow rates and most conditions on small sites compared to CUHP. While our report presented rational method, we. We did run CUHP as part of our due diligence. It's something I I often do. To just background check and make sure the various methodologies are. Producing similar, you know. There's no oddities. In this case, the. CUHP numbers were slightly lower lower and more importantly for what I'm looking at is. The increase was slightly lower. So therefore we use the rational method. It's city of Boulder code. It's guidelines. It's the higher number storm forward. So that kind of. Gives you a little background on the drainage piece and I'll be happy to talk more details as needed. Process wise, as as Carl mentioned, it's an interesting situation with these subdivisions where. We are actually required to show the overlot grade condition and not specific improvements at this time. The specifics get reviewed at building permit. It's something I'm very familiar with. But with staff, with engineering review staff. During the tech process. Our job is to make sure that the. When we get to building permit, we don't have a problem. So what how we analyze the drainage is. We. We did utilize impervious areas. We looked at. Other projects of similar sized lots and we broke down the site. Impervious area by rooftop, anticipated garage, all the specifics. And based on that. We gave a. Theoretical, here's what we think the runoff will be. Numbers might be at a developed condition. We don't have specifics, so I can't design swales, pipes, any of that stuff. But it gives us an idea of what the numbers are. And in this case, we have some small increases to expected. We're adding. Another house. But we looked at the basins. We said, hey, th- these numbers of increase are are small. This is something we can easily manage at building permit and that's. Kind of the the key that is lost until now, if you're not really involved in the processes. When I develop the actual construction plans for the homes. I then have to take, I can take that and we go down the next depth of design and we look at adverse impacts to neighbors and. How are we going to convey roof water? And it should be, it's important to note that. That was not necessarily a component. Of single family home development until recently. For the most part. Civil engineers were not dragged into single family development unless there was a real red flag. Now, in the last five years, pretty much every project. We have to review, stamp and sign off. On a hillside, we're required to certify. Post construction drainage. And for projects like this, a key piece is. You know, we're, I I am always super concerned about adverse impacts on neighbors. I do not want to get. Dragged into a legal battle in the future. It's the last thing I want. Knowledge from some of the emails that the neighboring. Property immediately downstream has had some flood issues. It is. It is super important to. Acknowledge that that is an existing condition today. Short of mitigation on that property. If nothing happens at this property, there is still a drainage flooding risk.
And I just want to let you know you have your three minute mark.
Thank you. And as I said, short of any mitigation on that side of the equation. The way drainage policy works, establish conditions. The house on this lot was built nineteen sixty six. I believe the house next door is roughly a decade and I'm sure that I don't know the specifics, but I think it's around there. There's some drainage patterns that are are kind of towards the house and there's seen some issues. That is an existing. Known condition. And it could happen again without absolutely if mitigation is not done on that property by that owner. Same time, knowing that issue to me as a sign engineer. You bet when we go into building permit and staffs reviewing. We are going to be extremely focused on how we convey drainage along that property line towards the street. And the analysis done to date has shown us that the. Flow rates and the change in flow rates are small enough that. That'll be easily manageable as we go through permit and I'm working with engineering staff. So anyway, I'm I'm here to speak a lot more and address I I have been through. The white paper that their neighbor had mentioned and I did a detailed review. Well, very interesting. It does not really apply to the specific parameters of the site. So. Anyway, thank you, Board, and happy to. Here to answer questions.
All right. Thank you very much. So we are now going to have Q and A from the board with the applicant. And then we'll have public comment. After which applicant will have three minutes for rebuttal if they choose before deliberation. So. My colleagues on the board. John.
Yeah, I just like to ask Mr. Burke. With respect to the the wildlife corridor along the the north side of the lot. Of both lots, if he's successful. You mentioned that existing setback requirements you felt might be sufficient to satisfy the. Wildlife corridor use in that area is what? What's your perception of the setback requirements up there?
I believe that it is twenty five. I just want to clarify that. That I I don't believe that there is a there is any specific wildlife corridor, but I know that there's setbacks that we will have requirements on. That are at least twenty five feet.
It is, I can confirm that, John. So our lot line does not go to the ridge top. It it gets close. Don't get me wrong. And then there is a twenty five foot building setback on that side down the hillside. For any development.
So so your under your belief is that twenty five feet would be sufficient to maintain whatever. Wildlife corridor exists now. I understand it's not an official. Designation, but a but a an existing practical. One. According to the.
I I cannot claim to have done a wildlife study, but I I can say. That it is consistent with a lot of the setback or. A lot of the home setbacks. Along that line in there and the distance down from the ridge and the required setback is is continuous through there and. We're not proposing to change that.
Thank you.
Sarah.
This is more a question of curiosity. What exactly will hill hillside remediation? What does that mean for you all? Not not cost, but what is that? How do you all understand what that means?
So. Because as I said, Boulder County has kind of a standard set of notes and requirements regards to stabilization of slopes. And it requires certain speed seed mixes and other items. In the case of like steep slopes, two to one and more were required to do erosion control matting and things like that. At a four to one that it's not required, you need to. Provide silk protection until it stabilized down the street, protect public infrastructure, protect neighboring properties. And then we have seed mix requirements, you know, if they demo on the house and there's a gap before any, the home foundations would go in, they're required to use a temporary seed mix. And I specified the Boulder County required mix for this elevation zone. Any flow lines of swales, we would then also put erosion control blankets on. And we have some, sorry, I'm trying to pull up my plan because I'll admit that I we did do a full plan, we have, oh, and then we have some sediment control logs planned across the hillside, which are the straw waddles, you know, the little straw tubes. I, I like those, they tolerate wind, snow really well. So I, you know, I specify those to contour across the hillside. Honestly, at a four to one slope, normally you would not be required to do a specific revegetation plan. The, the city justifiably, engineering staff said we want to see it and it's good practice moving forward. You know, we've never had to in the, historically, but I think it's a good idea.
Great. I really appreciate that explanation. Thank you very much.
I have a question. On myself, so to confirm, if you get to the permit phase and the, the building plans and it's determined that you can't actually contain the water as you thought, then that's where you're stopped, right? And we can approve this, but you still have other hoops that you have to get through. You believe you can, so you're going through this hoop. But there's going to be another set of analyses over all of this, correct?
Absolutely. You know, we provide a grading and drainage plan and we basically evolve everything with the home footprints. We show how we're handling roof drain discharges. And, and I can tell you from experience, I, I've probably got twenty-five or thirty sink projects going in the city at the moment under construction and just been through permitting. You know, staff is, staff will kick that permit out if you're not explaining how you're handling it. And if they see water being dumped on a neighbor's property and won't approve it. I'm sure one of the engineering staff can speak to their approach as well as needed.
Thank you. My colleagues on the board, any additional questions before we have, we open the floor to public comment? All right, Cindy, if you would like to coordinate public comment, I would appreciate that.
You, as before, if you have public, if you'd like to make any comments, please go down to hover over your control bar down at the bottom and you'll see a raise hand function. I do see we want to have, do have one person on the phone. You'll use a star nine to, in order to raise your hand. And you'll have three minutes to speak. And I will start your time once you start speaking. And then I will unmute you before you begin to speak. I do see one person already have their hands raised. We have a Jeff Ellis. And Jeff, I'm going to unmute you here so you can speak. And the next person we have raised their hand is on the telephone. So when you, when I unmute you, I will ask that you state your full name. And also Jeff, after you begin to speak, if you wouldn't mind stating your address or at least what area you live in. So Jeff, I'm going to unmute you right now and you should be able to speak now. Sorry. Can you speak now?
Hello, can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay, great. Yeah, my name is Jeff Ellis. I live at the property at eighteen eighty-five Kohler Drive, which is directly next door to the proposed subdivision and directly down slope. So I have concerns, very serious concerns about drainage issues essentially. And the first question that I would like to put to Mr. Stevens is that the, the storm drainage report that they produced, it makes assumptions about roof areas and impervious driveways and, and other surfaces. But what they haven't considered is that if the subdivision were approved, the house, the existing house is demolished. And then if these new developments don't go forward and the property sit there vacant, there has not been any analysis of what the effect on storm drainage will be in that scenario. And we know that, that, you know, the area and location and previous service has a very large impact on storm drainage. And so there needs to be a separate analysis of before, I understand that once they get, once they get the approved subdivision and then they want to go to the building stage, they will have detailed plans. And then they'll have more analysis of what the storm drainage would look like in that scenario. But in the interim, I'm, I'm, you know, down slope of this, looking at the, you know, sort of the barrel of a gun of what could be coming on to my, my, my property without any, any sense, this, this storm report. And there's been no analysis of what actually that might look like in the absence of any site there. I would also, as I mentioned in an email that was sent to the, to the, to the planning board, I would just reiterate that, that, you know, I did send a paper that, that does question this rational method. And I know Mr. Stevens has dismissed that as, you know, not appropriate. But I would like to him to specifically address those concerns and show us, you know, technically why the rational method really is, is valid. We have a, I've sent you a peer reviewed publication from a reputable journal that has shown that that method has been, is known to underestimate peak discharges on steep hill slopes. And so that's a grave concern of mine. And I would like to see that addressed more thoroughly than just dismiss it and say, oh, it doesn't apply here. I, I think that's all I really want to say at this point. So I will turn back my time to others. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. And our next speaker tonight is on the phone. So again, I'm going to ask that you state your full name and your address, or at least the location of where you live. And I'm going to, I have just unmuted you. You should be able to speak now.
Cindy, he seems, he or she seems to still be muted.
Yeah, I'm
Okay, can you hear me now?
We sure can. Go ahead.
Okay, my name is David Cassoy. I live at two thousand Kohler Drive, which is on the south side of the street. We own the house next door to us at nineteen eighty Kohler Drive, which we purchased because the previous owners had indicated that a developer wanted to buy the house, knock it down and put up two houses on that lot. In addition, we have a house across the street, I think at nineteen sixty-five, which is scheduled to be demolished in January. And my expectation is that they will seek a, a, a plan to build a second house on that lot as well. Furthermore, down the, further down to the east, there is a lot where a house has already been demolished in a very large lot, which I, which I am imagining is going to be suffering from the same consequence. The point of all of this is that this neighborhood has a lot of people who have lived here, here for a long time. And they will take the opportunity to sell off their lots and double the population of the, of the street. So my, my, my resistance to this plan is that it was the beginning of a total change in the character of the neighborhood. Now I have another comment to make. The slope at eighteen sixty-five will be pretty hairy for driveways and cars to go up and down that particularly in bad weather. I mean, there's no, that's, that's a pretty steep slope. And I say that from my perspective as a mechanical engineering, retired mechanical engineering professor. So I have some sense of what kinds of accidents could occur in that kind of situation. I, I have to congratulate the applicants because their, their, their clear description of the Boulder revised code and what, what they, what they believe they have met in the way of that code is, is, make, makes it perfectly rational to seek permission to do this. But there, there is a neighborhood problem here in the sense that there will be a total change in the char, not a total change, a change in the character of the neighborhood if people start to pop up two houses on every lot. That's all I need to say right now.
Thank you so much for your comments. And it looks like we have another speaker. It looks like it's Lynn Segal. And Lynn, I'm going to unmute you. And you should be ready to go.
Yeah, Lynn Segal, Sixth Bend Dewey. This is, at first I was thinking Kohler at Knollwood is our neighborhood like that here by a little west of Mapleton. But you know, at least this isn't the other side of Green Mountain Cemetery where Stephen Tebow, John might remember this, years and years ago, decade at least, was building on a steep slope. There's a Hartling house there. The guy, the owner is a train fanatic, small trains, you know. And, and I remember that steep slope situation was like a disaster. And John smiling like he probably remembers that. But yeah, in this situation, you know, it makes me think if I ever had a lot that was twice the size of an average lot in, in an urban area, I'd certainly want to position anything I built on it on one side or, or the other of the property and have my, my open space on the side rather than putting the house in the middle. Because then you're forced to demolish the house and put up two, you know, it'd be nicer if you were in a situation where you could keep the house up and avoid the extra landfill and demolition. And, you know, embodied energy losses of, of another house, at least you'd have an option. But, you know, people aren't always thinking of what they're going to do ahead of time. But that's why I like watching planning board. I can think of things before they happen and learn something from the situation. But I'd say generally the situation, oh, that the ration, did they call it the rationale method of determining the, the groundwater and the, and like the, the shifting land or ground or dirt, what have you. It, it sounded to me like Curtis was saying that that is a more conservative method of analysis. But the, the next door neighbor said that it was not, so that's a little confusing, but I think that it's been a pretty thoughtful process from what it looks like. And then like they say, until you build something, you don't know what the repercussions of it are. The, the design of the roof, the design of how much land you're using up and how you're changing the, the natural environment there. And, you know, and hopefully people remediate the land as best they can to the natural grassland so that the soils are absorbing appropriately. I mean, I follow rocky flats all the time and all that, all the stuff under there and the, and this, and the, the, what do they call it? I forget, but you know, shifting slump, the slump area by the creek and the groundwater and all, you know, it's a living system that we have an ecosystem. And when you're putting property on it and building structures on it, you're affecting it. And so I can understand the neighbors.
Thank you.
You know, if you could wrap up, Lynn, your time is up.
Yeah, in general, I'd say it, it sounds reasonable. There may be someone from N Car Nist can have a place to live. I know it increases the density, but they are decent sized lots and it sounds like a reasonable thing to do.
So Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, Lynn. I'm, don't see any other hands right now, but I'm going to ask if anyone else has a comment to make. Going once, going twice. Please raise your hand. And Peter, I don't see any other hands being raised.
All right. Thank you, Cindy. I invite the applicant to come back if they would like to speak to anything they heard in public comments. As they may know, they have three minutes to do so if they choose.
Yeah, I, I can definitely speak to some of Jeff's comments. And I don't know if, if Brady had anything else to say, but it related to plan, if not, I can address some engineering questions. Let me
You're good to go.
Good Brady or?
You're good to go. Thank you.
All right. I'm here, I'll share my screen really fast. And, you know, regards to Mr. Ellis's comments, you know, I, I actually appreciate the opportunity to speak a little further to this. I kind of ran out of time and was planning, hoping to talk a little more about the analysis because first and foremost, I, I did have a chance to get the paper you referenced from ASC. It's a, it's a really new paper from twenty twenty-one, talks about hillside drainage analysis and rational method. As I previously mentioned, it's rational method is kind of the adopted methodology in the front range. It is a widely discussed methodology all across academia and engineering. Because it, all, every drainage methodology spits out different numbers and their validities for basin size and appropriateness varies. It really does. And it's really important to know what the kind of, what your limitations are with the methodologies. In the case of the front range, they want us to, the rational method is kind of used broadly to have a consistent, uniform process, you know, between projects. You know, you're using a consistent method. Specifically regarding this hillside memo or white paper, it's really interesting to talk, or, and what it talks about is on hillsides where you imagine if you're standing up at N Car, as you look down the hill, it fans out, right? If you, if you're a drop of water, it can kind of work its way and that, that area gets wider and wider. And it's basically saying, in those cases, the rational method is the basin gets larger, you get more divergence and you need to consider it and most likely make smaller basins. It also, this paper also talks about within that time of concentrations and how, which is how fast water peaks and how that plays an impact. And not to get too kind of into the weeds with how much, but um, one of the things that's important is they're talking about time of concentration when the divergence happens on various hillsides. They use an acre. We are using point one, point two acre basins. And, and they're up in, you know, six, seven minutes where things are starting to go off. What's important here is we're really at the minimum or closer to the minimum basin for analysis with these basins at being, you know, point one, point two acres. Our time of concentration is five minutes. That is the bare minimum allowed by code. You can't use a number. The, the charts that we use for flows had it. It stops. And what's important with that is five minutes is the highest rainfall intensity allowed. You're using the worst case you're possibly allowed to use within the code compliance. And that's what we're using on both of our drainage basins. That's we have a five minute and a five minute basin time to get kind of the worst case. As far as the divergence, honestly, these basins are too small and too uniform to really justify it. So, well, actually a very interesting paper and could apply to a lot of things in this area. Didn't, wouldn't really change the numbers in the case of this site. Secondly, Mr. Ellis, you're talking about interim. Well, we didn't provide runoff numbers for the interim condition. Part of the code was showing how it would be graded out and how we would convey the water down to the street in that if Brady demos this house, he has to grade it this way. And he has a monetary commitment to the city. I forget if it's a letter of credit or however it was done, but it's been getting posted. It says he has to do this and then he has to do a, the revegetation plan I previously spoke about. Key with the interim runoff, why, why didn't we do a, a third set of numbers? Well, the basin line changes almost The basin line changes almost negligible. And all the without a house on it, all the impervious areas go down, the runoff rates go down, so. We were looking at worst case. So, you know, I I've thought a lot about it and I do want to reiterate. I am. Very much aware of when we're working against adjacent properties and we're going into building permit, you know. My life's a lot easier if I'm not in a dispute with people, it's just the reality. I I would rather. Well, someone would argue I cannot. When you're involved in development, you can't leave something better, but from my control. Of what I do as a drainage engineer, I do want to ideally leave things. Better within than where we started to, like I said, within the items I control, so.
Curtis, to wrap up your thoughts, okay, thank you.
How do I stop there?
Curtis, I I have no doubt that you could have talked about drainage for another seven to eight hours.
I don't want to though, it's. But I can.
All right.
I think passion about something is awesome.
Oh, yeah, something that. Is very important when it's important, that's for sure. Anyone who is here. Twenty thirteen can remember, all right, so. Having completed the applicant rebuttal period, we are now entering deliberation. And we have. A fairly. We've got one key issue here. And really of the. Issues inside that I'd say one's been flagged, although we can speak to any of them. Would anyone like to start us off? John Gerstall.
Yeah, I I would just like to ask staff a question and maybe that's Hella or Carl. And that is to inquire how much discretion we have. Could we approve this with conditions? Or are we limited to just saying yes or no to the application?
Um, if you find that as proposed. The application meets the review criteria, then you have to approve it as proposed. If you find that it doesn't meet the review criteria, then you can approve it. If you add conditions of approval that you think will bring it in compliance with the code. But only for that purpose to make sure that there is code compliance.
Thank you.
All right, going around Lupita, hello.
Hello. I know that a very common argument with that we get. Before the. Our board is how every single. Not every single, but the majority of the cases that can be gone before us, that one argument that is very recurring is. How any changes that happen to our city will change the character of the city. And so it's it's probably the most used argument that I've heard in my time in the board. And. When I hear that, I I started thinking about what exactly is is going to be changing is so much that is going to make a big difference. So one of the things that came up to me, thinking as I was looking especially at the. At the map. Regarding the the plots. The division for this property. It appeared to be not too different from what is in the in the region, so in terms of compliance, it seemed to me. The difference in the. In the. Character really didn't hold, but what I would like to know if if the owner or or even if we have that. Information. Available that we can talk about how. That the subdivision meets the size criteria and how that compares to the, you know. To. To the nearby properties, so to me it's like how different is this subdivision gonna? How much, how much difference will it be creating in comparison to the nearby properties? And because I know that they meet the criteria, they have, you know, they exceeded seven thousand. And 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 they're not just a seven thousand, is that above or one is at ten thousand, so. How that diff, how difference is that from those plots in that area? And I would like to hear in terms like twenty percent smaller, you know, fifty percent smaller, just so I get a sense of what we're talking about.
I apologize, I'm not seeing an icon to turn my video on for some reason, but. To answer your question, I mean, we haven't done an analysis to that extent of how it relates to. Other property sizes other than when you look at the. At the map that shows the surrounding area, there's a range of lot sizes that go from seven thousand up to about twenty three. Thousand, but we we've not done a breakdown.
Yeah, yeah, but if you don't mind showing us that map again. I mean, I did a like a quick survey, you know, how many of the smaller sizes are there around there versus the really large ones?
You can see some of these properties at the corner down by Deer Valley Road or are closer to the the seven thousand. Square foot size, whereas when you go further down Kohler towards the east, you're getting up to like over twenty thousand inside.
You go farther out into the open space. Thank you, that's that's helpful to me.
Thank you, Lupita. Sarah.
So I want to thank. Hella for laying out the frame, the parameters of what our decision opportunities are here. And. Given the language in nine dash twelve dash twelve A one I, it seems to me that this proposal. Does meet the code. And. I'm not sure that there is a, that there are any. Conditions we would know enough to add on to and there's still, as Peter pointed out. A number of steps for this applicant to. To take before it, he gets approval for. The houses that he would like to build. So from my perspective. I I think it does meet code and and the motion is fine as is, that's just my take.
John.
I have another question for staff and that is. The neighbor expressed concern about what might happen in a in a interim period after demolition of the existing house and. Construction of new houses. And I wondered to what degree. Issues of drainage are considered by the city when it issues a demo permit.
I'm going to defer to our engineering staff on that question.
Can't hear you, Edward.
Try that button, now can you hear me?
Yes.
Too many different ones that have to be clicked. Good evening, Edward Stafford, Senior Manager, Civil Engineering for Planning and Development Services. Generally, generally interim conditions that occur during construction are the responsibility of the contractor and or the owner and we don't necessarily look at. Specific interim conditions in smaller projects, it's something that's a larger phased approach. There may be an interim set where they're making significant grading and significant changes. In a project such as this, we would want to see a grading plan as a part of a grading or part of a demo permit that at least demonstrates what they intend to do with the lot in that. Interim condition post the demo and we'd be looking to see if that generally complies with. The existing grading and in this case really the the plans then that have been approved as a part of this subdivision. I will agree with the applicant's engineer that the more conservative situation is the built out situation and. The interim condition unless they were to do something illogical with grading that directed flows other than the historic pattern. Would not be of concern.
I see, so so that's not typically. Considered in in the demolition permit.
Correct, not on a project of this size, if we were talking a hundred acre site that was going to be done in phases, there may be some. Additional phase plans as a part of a drainage in a part of a construction document set, but not something at this size.
All right, thank you.
All right. If there are. No other questions than I invite anyone who desires to make a motion. I see Sarah's hand raised.
Just to get this going, I make them, I. Do I have to read the motion or can I just say I make the motion? Hella, what is the?
Read it, you should read it, Sarah.
Okay, so.
And I, and Sarah, I'm going to already tell you that if you're reading the motion from the packet that I'm going to propose in addition at the end.
Okay, so I'm making a motion to approve technical documents application. T E C two zero two one dash zero 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 one nine. Adopting the staff memorandum as findings of fact, including the attached analysis of review criteria. Take it away, Hella.
And subject to the conditions incorporated into the attached subdivision agreement.
Do we have a second? Lupita. For the second. Lisa, I saw your hand come up.
Oh, I thought Lupita was seconding, I was just.
Oh, yes. I got a seconded by Lupita. Let's have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
May I just make a statement prior to the vote?
Yes, you may.
It's it's for the record and this is really a comment to. To many of the neighbors who were concerned about this and to me, this is a lesson. In the value of. Maintaining a an HOA that is able to make its point when it counts on issues of this type. Right now, there's nobody who, even if there were any covenants that were relevant here, there doesn't appear to be any. Institution that has standing to to pursue those points. And so I would encourage neighborhood associations in general to make sure that they're functional. And paying attention and able to. Make a, make their points when it counts. So, that said, I'm going to be supporting Sarah's. Motion because I I see that that is appropriate in this case.
Wonderful, well then, just to be clear, let's. I think we had unanimous. Vote of all present members of the planning board.
And Peter, sorry to interrupt, but under the virtual rules, you actually have to do a roll call just.
Oh, understood, thank you very much.
How everybody voted and then also for the record, if you can confirm, Sarah, that you incorporated the language. I read into your motion.
All right, so. How how do I do that in a way that's legally binding?
I think you can just say that.
Okay, so the my motion incorporates Hella Panawig's additions.
All right, John Gerstall.
Aye.
Lupita Montoya.
Aye.
George Boone.
Aye.
Lisa Smith.
Aye.
Sarah Silver.
Aye.
And Peter Vitale votes aye. Thank you, everyone, I echo John's thoughts. In a slightly different direction, just that. It is, as Lupita mentioned as well, it is the often hardest part of what we do is that everything we do has an impact on the community. The micro community that it's in and. I I would really hate to see this neighborhood. Destroyed by overbuilding to the point where it suffers. Catastrophe and I'm happy, I'm glad we have a very competent group of professionals. That surround our staff and guide us and that won't happen. I hope that you have some good new neighbors and a diverse new stock. All right, so we are now. At item. Screen go, we're now we're at item six. Matters from the planning board, planning director and city attorney. Inside this. Item, we are going to have our letter to letter to council discussion. And I'll turn it over to Cindy to help coordinate this next segment of our meeting.
Great, um, yes, we are going to start with our letter to council. Discussion and I had provided the draft that Lupita and Sarah had. Graciously put together for you all from your discussion from November twenty second. No, excuse me, was it twenty second? Yeah, the twenty. I don't know.
It was a while ago.
It was a twelfth, I think, I think it was a twelfth, I had the twenty second with another board, sorry. And. So if I'm not sure how you want to do this, how how the board would like to conduct this, if you want to. Put the draft on the screen and edit. This is your letter, so I'm going to let you conduct your business how you would like to, I'm happy to to help you out. And and how you want to proceed.
Can I make a suggestion? So what we did last year and what I think makes sense to do again this year is. To have two other people. Take this draft and improve it based on our disc discussion tonight. And so maybe what makes sense is for two people to volunteer themselves. And then those folks can take notes from our discussion. And that's not try, I wouldn't necessarily suggest trying to wordsmith it. This way and instead have them come back with a revised, that's just a suggestion.
And I just remind the board that the the deadline is the fifteenth to get it to me. I need to turn it in, so. Whoever these persons are going to be, I that I do need it, that is an absolute.
I think that's totally doable, given the phenomenal work that Sarah Lupita did to this point. So I accept that.
It was just mostly Lupita because I had like a five page treatise and she cut it down to a page and a half, so.
Very great, very nice.
Well, I I I could volunteer to be one of the. Drafters of the final version.
I'll do that with you, John.
Okay, good.
All right, so you guys will take some notes of your own and then. Can can you put on the, can you put Cindy the draft that has David's comments as well? So that those are incorporated into our discussion tonight?
Yes.
A great idea, so that'll become the new master, now that we're accepting all those comments necessarily until we agree, but I think that's good to use that as a. As a starting point.
Give me. Thirty seconds.
Okay.
Get everything here. See here. All the words are blending in together.
I will see if I have down what day you sent it.
I have David's comments here and I'll take. Drop those in there. Okay, I do have everything here, so let me get.
Now you sent it to us on Wednesday, yesterday.
Yes. Get it. Okay, I'm sharing my screen. You tell me if this looks right.
There it is.
There it is, and it's got David's. Comments in there. I'm going to make you so I can see everyone's faces here on another screen, there we go. Be able to see everyone. I'm watching for Jacob to to join us, Jacob's going to be joining us here momentarily, so I'm watching for him every once in a while. So forgive me if I'm glancing off to.
Can you get rid of the? The notes on the right hand side so that the draft itself is a little bit bigger on the screen?
Sure.
I think you can just, I think it's the way it's. Yeah. Under, I think going, yeah, I'd go under review.
All those changes. All those changes.
No, 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 don't accept the changes, just um, change, uh, get, see where it says reviewing pain. I think that's what you need to change. Right, yeah. You know what, don't worry about it, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna do anything with David's edits. That should be. There we go, woo.
Well, we started to talk.
Uh, Lupita, do you want to unmute? We can sort of talk it, just.
Yes.
You just muted yourself again.
Sorry. Pressed a little bit too, too long.
So basically, um, what Lupita and I wanted to do was to capture the themes that were shared uh, during our, our Friday morning meeting. Um, and uh, we use a lot of the language, like literally the language that um, you all shared with us. Um, and our, what we were trying to do was to highlight the objective of long, longer-term planning into which um, proposals or applications could fit rather than to be so driven by the application process. Um, and, and then at the last bottom third, we were trying to um, convey to council what, um, with the role, what we perceive the role of planning board to be. Um, and uh, um, I, so that's, that was our goal. Um, and then I think that the only thing that's kind of missing, you, the, the language may all need to be changed up, but what it's missing is sort of a concluding paragraph, um, I think. Uh, and um, so I, that's, that's my framing for this. Lupita, what would you like to add? Or state?
No, I think, I think that sums it up. I think there were, the main thing we were trying to make sure is that the, the major things that we talked about were embedded and then clear and um, and justified based on the discussions we had. Um, yeah, it was, I, I thought was straightforward. It's, it's much better than when, that, when we have multiple major points and um, I, I, I kind of like it this way. It's, it's pretty much one um, unified theme. Uh, and yes, I think probably the only thing it will require just one closing statement, that will be one that our colleagues can come together as they see it, because with there may be some, some changing. Um, so maybe we can proceed to see what impressions people get from this.
Uh, just start talking. Or else I'm gonna call on you. Uh, George, I'm gonna call on you, George.
I can hear you. So, you, you want to talk about this first section here?
Yeah, I think any, any comments that you might have that you would like, uh, John and uh, Peter to take note um, for their, for any edits they may make.
You, can you, um, I don't know if there's a way to expand the length of this so we can see more of it on the screen. Because we've got a pretty small section there.
I'm playing. Let me know if this is, is that totally unreadable for you?
That works for me, but it is a little small.
Okay. I have it up on that, another monitor, so.
It works for everybody else, it's fine.
You could also try minimizing the panel, if that helps.
George, I just emailed to you the letter. So you can put it up on your own screen.
This is the full first page.
Okay.
How does that look for everyone? Okay.
Overall, I really like the direction it's going in. I have like some minor um, wording edit suggestions that I can bring forward now or later.
Yeah, bring them forward now.
Okay, so starting with the first paragraph, um, I would move to strike in the second sentence, the planning board recognizes the challenges faced by the elected officials. I'd strike the before elected. Unless someone likes that the very much. Um. Prioritize long-term development, development planning into its work plan. I think into there, I think I would make it the. Priorities, long-term development planning into the work plan, or in the work plan, maybe not into, something about that feels a little clunky.
It's the second paragraph.
Yeah, sorry, sorry Cindy.
Oh yeah, okay.
In the work plan.
Two, okay.
And John, I'm trying to make edits on the doc on my end in real time, so then I'll compare that with notes. It looks like you're taking later.
Okay, I'm trying to, that, that sounds great.
And this doesn't have to happen right now, Cindy, but at some point you might want to do a search and replace for two spaces to one. Um, I think we have some spots where periods have two spaces after.
Uh, that's because that's how I was.
I know, it took me so long to get over my.
Took me a long time to not do that anymore, but.
I, I, I do it on all of my writing. I go through and I do a find and replace because I'm.
Strunk and white is my bible, so.
Written in the, yeah, I, I love, I love. I like, I like the bullet points under the first header. Um, this is a minor stylistic thing, but we've got no space, which I like after that first colon, and then we do have a space after the second, so if it's possible to believe that. It might be in formatting or something.
I can't seem to do it.
Yeah, but when you.
I'm making comments, I'm making uh, the edits live on my.
Thank you, thank you, Peter. Um, do, 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 blah, blah, blah.
Um, I can see one, um, bullet number three in the second set of bullets. I think it could just say revise zoning. Doesn't need the revising.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
No, no, no D either, just revise.
Revised zoning. So do you want it all to be like increased, do you want it to be paralleling, like increase ownership options, establish mechanisms, update housing?
Yes, it, I, the only, only missing should have the I N G.
Because of, yeah.
Revise, establish. And then um, I would also with um, that last bullet, update housing stu- need study. And then we have all verbs.
I'm trying to see if we can lose a line there, so sim- sorry. So I'm looking at the introductory um, paragraph before the second set of bullets. Similarly effective area planning incentivizes preservation, and I get rid of the in development of affordable and non-luxury housing, including smart blah, blah, um. I, I think something like city focus should be on, or something like that, or focus should be on. I wonder if we can just shorten that last um, thing, instead of focus should be placed in.
Was this, okay, yeah.
Focus should be on, or our focus or city focus or something.
Mm-hmm.
Focus areas could include, should include.
I like that.
Sounds good.
My dream is that that can like lose that last line, that I don't know if it's enough.
I just know that, that last bullet seems to correspond with Jacob's thoughts on doing a decent housing need study also, that uh, hit the press uh, this last week.
We will honor Jay.
Sarah, your connection is not great.
Okay.
Just to let you know. To go to the second page.
This is kind of a, a minor thing. I wonder if other people would agree, but under the second set of bullets, um, I think four of the bullets refer to housing. Um, and then the third is not housing specific. I've moved the third bullet to the bottom and kind of grouped all the ones that caught housing specifically together.
Can I just make a suggestion before we go to the second page? I want to ask George a particular question. You, you wanted to make sure that we touched and we had to keep that the bullet, the first set of.
Sarah, I'm gonna recommend you toggle video off briefly. You're breaking.
Yeah, you're breaking up. It's hard to hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, um, this is a, for uh, George, uh, you had made it clear, you had raised the issue of demand. Um, and I think we tried to get it in, in the fifth bullet, wait, yeah, the fifth bullet in the first set of bullets. But I want to make sure that you feel that we adequately captured what you were trying to convey.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, 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 I think so. Um, let me think about that for a few minutes. I'll get back to you on it.
Can I make a comment on, on that? Also, in the, in the bullet above it, we talked about safeguarding dwindling industrial zones and local businesses established in this area. I think I was pushing that point pretty hard, and I was worried also about the affordability of, of industrial space.
What, what's your suggestion on how we might uh, capture that?
Safe, uh, somehow safeguarding, you know, I like what you have there, just in, you know, with attention paid to the affordability of, of industrial and commercial space. Or something like that, uh.
John, something else, the lines when we can, we can um, couple up the descriptors, safeguarding dwindling industrial zones and increasing cost or something like that. You can just put them together.
Oh, yeah, well, that would be fine with me too. I, I just want to draw attention to the increasing cost of that.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's, it's important because it is both, right? One is the, the amount of it as well as the cost of it.
Right.
So.
Can, can we also uh, make safeguarding, uh, just the word safeguard?
I kind of missed what you want. Did you want me to add something, Lupita? I'm sorry, I kind of missed that.
Instead of having the with attention to, I would just add at the beginning safeguard dwindling industrial zones of increasing cost or something like that, where you can put both issues that John is concerned about, which, you know, we said, two specific problems with this particular point is, is, you know, we're dealing with two things, both.
And remove this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, I, so I think the, it's not, uh, it wouldn't be of, it would be and.
And increasing cost.
Yeah.
So that, yeah, we, we're saying that there's two, do, two aspects of the way we've been handling industrial zones is one is that it is decreasing and increasing in cost, decreasing in, in number or space and increasing in cost, which is, you know, like the opposite direction we wanted to go, right, John?
Right.
Well, but isn't, is this, John and Lupita, is this the issue of as industrial zones are, are um, uh, especially like in the East Boulder sub-community plan, as they are allowed or it's proposed to also be office space? It's gonna be office space, or if it's gonna be residential, it's gonna, it's, it can also be residential. It will be residential because those are higher value uses of the, higher financial value uses of the land. That's, is that the, is that the issue you're trying to get at?
Right. I mean, to, to say it briefly, one, one issue is diminishing space devoted to industrial commercial uses, but the other issue is that as soon as there's new, new uh, investment in the, the little remaining space that there is, that increases the cost.
Yeah, so I mean, how.
Was, it's really a two different but related issues.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing. So the, the key thing is that, is the cost going up and the amount or space going down, so not, no need to qualify it too much. Yeah, you can just distill it to the two main points. Is the engineer in talking?
So just from a grammatical perspective, uh, by, I, I understand that wanting to put the and increasing costs in there, but then it's, then it reads that you are safeguarding increasing costs, just FYI, so.
Okay, well.
You, you have to do, you'll have to.
Peter and I will massage that appropriately.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, they are different. I mean, increasing rents, but it is tricky if we don't want to lock in horrible buildings that have received no uh, improvements and suffer from deferred maintenance yet are affordable, but once someone has to spend money and go through a multi-year process to develop something, they're going to need to charge something to get that back unless it's a charity. So uh, there are separate topics. I think that if we preserved the dwindling zones and then somehow had language, John and I can figure this out, around you know, attention to rising rental rates, which, you know, a whole nother government uh, discussion.
I, I will say something like safeguard, safeguarding or safeguard against dwindling industrial. Or you can say dwindling space and increasing cost of industrial zones. That's why you have the two modifiers, one um, subject. And I think because they're related, the issue, the issue is that, that, that we arguing about is the industrial zones is the problem. There's a number of things that are, you know, kind of going in the wrong direction when I point up, point out to those two things. We need to make sure that it doesn't continue to decrease. And we have to make sure that it doesn't continue to cost more. Um, that's the way I see it. Um, but anyways, uh, I think that's for the next team, but I, I think just to be clarified that that's what we meaning and I just, I think John kind of agree.
Are we okay then with saying that they, we need to pay attention to efforts to subsidize those rates, because absent subsidies, I don't see how it's I mean, everything is going up in cost everywhere, and it will go up unless there's some kind of a subsidy, which I don't know if there is.
Well, I, I don't think this letter is the place to go into how we solve the issue, but.
No, we talking about issues, not the solutions yet. This is a new, there's a new council coming in. Many of them are gonna have a wide range of concerns, and we just want to up zero their attention onto the topics that we think are of prime interest to us, so that they can, you know, they, they can come out with their own way, so there's no discussion. I think it's more to like bringing their attention to the topics that we think are most important.
Is, is equity its own bullet, or is that covered in the first bullet?
No, I think equity is a lot of things in addition to housing diversity, affordability, and ownership. I mean, I think it has to do with um, who participates in planning processes? Who speaks to council, uh, I mean, sorry. Uh, who speaks to planning board and to council? Uh, how, how we think about um, or how the city thinks about how to create uh, new neighborhoods, you know, we're, we're, our, our goal. New neighborhoods, you know, we're, we're, our, our goal here, you know, our big proposal here is. Area planning for the B C one, B C two zones and the opportunity that exists there is that you get. Um, essentially imagine new neighborhoods that have a lot of housing diversity, a lot of permanently affordable housing, retail. Et cetera, et cetera. That's not.
Yeah, I understand. I guess, I guess my point saying that was really, it just feels kind of like a catchall because it's just one word.
Yeah.
And it doesn't feel like, absent, absent descriptors, it, it feels very extremely broad.
Yeah.
Right?
If I may say something about that, I, I felt that way too, but from my perspective, it's like, we are so not in the space of equity here.
Yeah.
Like anywhere you look, we're short.
Fair, fair enough, fair enough. Uh, maybe we just, maybe what we do is we put that at the bottom then because it truly is a catchall for everything that. I mean, you could put equity in each one of these bullets too.
Lupita, do you have some suggestions about, uh, how we could expand on equity? Uh, as an, you know, without making it a, a page long component?
No, I, I think, I think the way the Georgie, um, mentioned is that it is a catchall. Because maybe in closer, you said, you know, and, uh, uh, with regards to equity, you know, is the thread. That permeates all of the challenges, um, in our city or something like that, just so that, you know, because it does is. In the way that we, um, we don't have enough, uh, enough housing, um.
I think the way you, I think the way you just said it, Lupita, was excellent. The thread that permeates the, I'm, you know, yeah, I, I, I thought that was excellent.
Yeah, something like that. It, I think was sufficient and I really liked the idea put in at the end.
Sort of that permeates all, I'm sorry, I missed the last word, issues. Is that what?
Yeah, all aspects.
All aspects. Thank you.
On the planning process, if you want to specifically talk about planning process, but it goes way beyond planning process. So maybe we don't. Even have to say that.
Uh, Peter, did you have anything you wanted to add on this first page?
Sure, I took a stab at the third bullet point and came up with. Similar safeguard dwindling space and consider increasing cost of industrial zones and the impact on local businesses established in these areas.
That's good. Can you, um, repeat that? So.
Sure.
Try to capture it.
And I have it, I have it here on my draft. Safeguard dwindling space and consider increasing costs in industrial zones. And the impact on local businesses established in these areas.
Considering, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh, and consider increasing costs, just safeguard. Consider.
I'll consider.
And then, and the impact on local businesses.
That at the end?
Yeah, well, yeah, just, no, you already have it up top.
Okay. Um, shall we move on to the second page? Wait, wait, I'm sorry, George, did you have?
Yeah, so, so I guess, uh, and I, I don't know if this accurately captures what I was trying to say or not, which is. Uh, I, I'd like to elaborate on it, but I don't know how you do that and keep things concise. I, I don't, at least I don't have clear understanding, but I have a suspicion. That the increased supply of commercial and office space. Is dramatically affecting Boulder and I don't know that, um. We have a good sense of that as a city. Um, one way or the other, kind of, kind of separate to Jacob's, you know, what Jacob said about, you know, housing. Supply and, and opportunity, um, and a study around that. I, I think that goes hand in hand in, in trying to study. So maybe, maybe it falls down to, to that second section too. Because I, I really think that for us to have a good view on housing, we need to have a comprehensive understanding. Of what office space does to the city.
So would you recommend maybe putting in addition to an up, update, a housing studies, a housing needs study? This would be in the second set of.
Yes, yes, I think, I think that's where that probably belongs.
So I have a second.
If others agree with that.
Another bullet that says, um, uh, conduct.
Conduct study on the impact of commercial. Office space as it relates.
As it relates to housing?
To housing. Right, we could further expand that into light industrial and other things that we're also facing, right? I mean, that's, that's really the eight hundred pound gorilla when it comes to eating up our commercial space and, and what it could be.
Yeah, well. And so does the university. I mean, we could conceivably propose or suggest that they consider. Uh, well, that would be in fit into the housing needs, but, um, to conduct a study. Would, would this also be a?
I, I think that falls into the housing need study. I don't know that it needs to be its own separate study. It just needs to be addressed within that housing study. Housing study just can't be myopic towards housing. Without understanding the tapestry of Boulder.
George, um, do you, are you, are you thinking about, um, so the way we've written this. A study on the impact of commercial space on housing. Uh, do you also think it would be valuable to, to have that study include a trajectory of office space development?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean broadly, right, that, that I would, I would expect both these studies, whatever, whatever this housing study is. Is, you know, is projecting things out into the future so we can make some good decisions as a city.
Yeah, so I think maybe with that, it's not just, it's not quite as implied. Um, in the way we've currently written this, the study of the impact of commercial space. Cause that could be a study that says something like for every three hundred square feet of commercial space, we expect two employees, that kind of thing versus. Uh, a trajectory, um, and then Lupita, I saw you raise your hand. You're, you're muted.
Yes, I, I think, I, I think what, um, Georgie is trying to address is the fact that. You know, we are dealing often with the issues of housing alone as if it's a, it's own problem. When in reality, it is a outcome of decisions that are being made, um, you know. In some way, large way, it, the type of businesses and industry that is increasing in the city. And understanding that before we go and continue that, because I see that increasing. Um, how is that going to have the larger impact? So I, I see that kind of like the, it's kind of like the outcome. Uh, but the process that leading to that outcome, that, and I, in my mind, they're related. But in how, how you really can prevent the outcome. Uh, if it's a negative outcome, it's understanding the process so you can stop it or modify it or address it in some way. Is, did I get that, uh, right?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I think exactly what you said is, is, is what I was trying to articulate. You just did it much better than I did.
No, I mean, because I'm, I'm, I'm listening, trying to understand, because I, 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 actually, I, I share your concern. Um, and I think that it's always for me more interesting to, to focus on, on what is causing it as opposed to just wait until the end. So yes, the process and you can bring them together by linking these things because that's really at the crucible of this. We, we do think that, um, this imbalance will continue and we are regularly making decisions. That seem to aggravate the problem. So that needs to be addressed. Um, I think by bringing this in together, you just kind of like say like it is.
Lupita, what would your recommendation be for how to convey that in this bullet point?
So even, even bringing it together with a previous bullet, updated housing needs, miss studies. And how are, you know, and how the, um, commercial space, um. Approaches or something like that leads to this, uh, um. To the increase of needs, also the imbalance, something like that, just kind of connecting the process to the outcome. I, I can think a little bit more clearly with a little bit of time, but if Georgie feels comfortable, maybe he can give it a, a try. He's usually very good at condensing things too. That's what we have to, I often follow what he's thinking because I, I'm thinking, I often think like him. So it's, I mean, with many of you, but, but that's what I listen because I say, yeah, that's exactly what I'm thinking. This is good.
Let me think about it for a few minutes too.
Okay, we'll come back to that. Um, and before we go to the second page, so David made a recommendation, which is in the sixth bullet point. Uh, we recommend something like creation of walkable mixed use neighborhoods that emphasize street activation. And de-emphasize car centric solutions. This is, anyone have any concerns about that sentence? Day, uh, John?
I, I personally am not sure that it's necessary. I think it's sort of implied in what we've been doing and what's in the comp plan and so on.
Yeah, I, I think this, this is, this is the topic of the past. I mean, we're, we're engaged on these things. I think we, we're bringing the emerging ones. I think we're doing a good job in that. In that, in that particular topic, in that particular area.
Um, anybody else want to chime in?
Only if we're gonna, I like Lupita said that there are some council members who are getting this for the first time. Granted, they've been following the issues, but it's something that we tend to agree on as a community. And so I would tend to put it in because I just love the word street activation. Walkable. And if it's a new council and we're trying to give them, here's everything we've been working on, by the way, and doing pretty good. And here's some other ideas that we focus on now. So I'm indifferent, but I, I hear both sides.
They need to learn a few terms, right?
Uh, Lisa, do you have any input on this?
I, I kind of agree with what I just heard from Peter. I think it could go. Both ways, um, you know, I often have a strong. Bias, I guess, towards simplifying things. Um, I do feel like maybe that's. Kind of already contained in some of our other bullet points elsewhere in the letter as well, I. I would be surprised, I guess, if any council member wasn't already thinking along those lines. So I, I just, I wonder if it's a bit redundant. I think my bias would be towards striking it.
All right, um, then let's, I, I'm hearing. People would be fine with it, but it seems redundant. So let's go ahead and strike it. And, um, if we, if we find opportunities to add some of that wording back into the, um. The actual two sentence, uh, recommendation that's bolded, we can do that. You guys could do that. You know, maybe define neighborhood centers a little bit as, you know, walkable mixed use neighborhoods, blah, blah, blah.
Hey, second page, we think.
I've got, I've got a, I've got an idea for that, um.
The jobs.
Bullet that we were talking about. Maybe you can just put it in a separate bullet and then you guys can decide if that's good or not.
So Cindy, this would, this would be bullet number five in the first set of bullets.
No, no, it would be the, the bullets that we were working on, the, the housing studies bullets.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Um, and I would, I, 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 I wrote down the following. Conduct. A study, uh, uh, for Boulder's housing needs. And the relationship. That growing commercial spaces and university expansion.
After relationship, can you repeat that?
Oh, yeah, um, conducted, uh, what I say, so far, kind of studying in Boulder's housing needs and the relationship. That growing commercial spaces and university expansion may have on affordability.
So is.
Do we want to add office and commercial? Cause it's not all the same included. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I was thinking commercial, you know, encompassed office, but.
I like this because it's figuring out which of the levers that we have is going to make the difference, but I'm also curious. Theoretically. If there was no pressure on the market because of CU and there was no additional pressure. Because we stopped office. Wouldn't all the homes fly off the shelf just as fast because there's a line of people? That goes for miles that would like to buy a house in Boulder, period. And so we'd have the same thing, except we just wouldn't have. But, I mean, would it solve the problem, I guess, I would think.
I guess, I, I guess from my, from my perspective, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I agree with you. I just want to make sure it's in there that we may find that. That's just moving the deck chairs around and we're going to have on the Titanic and we still have the same problem no matter what.
Well, then that calls into question the whole jobs, housing and balance thing to begin with, right? That calls into question the whole jobs, housing and balance thing. That's like a, a, I, I. I mean, I, I, I see a direct link. I mean, I see a direct link on, on CU not housing any bit more than, than freshmen. Um, if CU, you know, you, I was just, you know, being alumni from Cornell, not to get into the, the weeds here. But, you know, Cornell spent a tremendous amount of, uh, energy in the past twenty years on building dorms on campus. And now that they, they're mandating sophomores live there, actually just this year, um, and then they're going to try to do the same thing for juniors and seniors. And if we had the university doing something like that, I got to imagine it's going to take some pressure off holder. Uh, is it gonna, is it gonna change needle? Uh, who, I, I mean, I think that's why we need a study like this to really understand what's going on.
And if I may add, we are not talking just housing imbalance. In this pandemic, it was a very direct negative effect on our community and safety.
Yeah.
So what's after university, George?
Sorry, um.
It's okay.
That study of both was housing news, growing commercial spaces and university. May, um, oh, and in university expansion. May have. On housing affordability.
Availability and affordability.
Availability and affordability, yeah.
I would kind of just to. Not to repeat what Peter just said, but. I would add to that something about. Like the increase in remote work or something like that, because I, I agree. I definitely think that. The size of CU, the fact that CU has chosen not to, you know, invest in off-campus housing, even in the form of like buying up single-family homes, which I've seen universities do. I think that matters. I think, um, commercial and office space matters, although I'm very curious about how, I don't know. How many, how much office space is sitting empty right now? And I don't know how much of that is going to be backfilled. It's very expensive, class A office space that some of those. I, I don't know, like, I don't know what's going to happen, but I think to like Peter's point and, you know, I, I'm thinking about mountain towns. I was just, um, over toward Carbondale and, um. I don't think like, you know, Aspen or Winter Park or Crested Butte or Telluride, I don't think it's the commercial and office space that's causing it. I think it's, it's a desirable place to live. Um, so I'd like to have that in there too. I don't want to strike what you're talking about. Um, Georgie, I think your points are excellent, but I'd like to put something in there around just the fact that Boulder's a magnet and.
Yeah, and, and, and maybe, maybe, maybe we put it in that in of, you know, remote work. I, I think that's a super reasonable, you know, and, and, and real thing going on, right?
Yeah, I mean, you know, you can sell a relatively quote modest house in Boston or San Francisco or New York or. And buy a lot, so.
Uh, and the efficacy, something around the ethic, the, the lens through which this should be viewed is. What's the efficacy of each of those? Uh, solutions, because it, it's a solution that doesn't, like, you know, global warming. If it's a lot of work for something that's not going to actually lower the temperature, then let's find the other solution that is. Like the big ones, like what, what is the big one? And this, I love this, George, because this is saying, let's start ranking these things. You know, like the carbon footprint, like what, what is it that's going to give us the most push, the most bang for our buck? And really lean into it as a community. That's something I think would be amazing.
And also, and I mean, this is beyond the purview of planning board perhaps, but certainly within the realm of what I would hope council be thinking about. Particularly when they're working with, um, you know, legislative advisors and so on, but you know, where are the things where we need to be? Maybe not we as planning board, but we as a bigger community and we as a city need to be thinking regionally, we need to be thinking, you know, what, what are. Maybe not we as planning board, but we as a bigger community and we as a city need to be thinking regionally, we need to be thinking, you know, what, what are we lobbying or what are we asking for help with? Because there are things that are just beyond our ability to directly impact.
So, so do we want to just edit that then, say, conduct study of holders, housing needs, relationship, growing commercial office spaces, university expansion and trends towards remote work maybe having on housing affordability and availability?
I know it's maybe a little, um, imprecise, but I almost, I'm, I'm feeling the siren call of adding, adding an et cetera on there. You know, basically, we're just trying to say like, look at the, look at the whole picture, you know, like what is influencing this? What is causing what's going on? And I, I like the things that we've called out, but it does feel to me like it's probably not exhaustive. You know, so I, I welcome pushback on that because I realize it is a little sloppy because we're not calling it out, but I also feel like there's probably stuff we're not thinking of right now, you know, at eight o'clock on a Thursday that, you know, it's also impacting um, the market and what we're seeing and.
I think an ETC after remote work, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's what I would put in.
Sure. Yeah, I think that makes sense.
You know, it's interesting because the East Boulder sub-community plan that will come our way will, uh, if I remember correctly, from the 60% study that they presented to us is gonna have uh, I think it's adding 4,000 housing units. So that's the proposal. But it's also proposing significantly more office space. Um, and so we never catch up, we, we can't catch up.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, and, and that's, I'm not saying that that is a bad thing or a good thing. It's just, it puts us on a path, it keeps us on a path that we keep saying we want to try to get off of.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm not saying that, and the study like this would help to frame the discussion that staff creates for future, uh, area planning processes. Uh, Peter?
Well, uh, if we're gonna do, then I would, seems like we can't do this and have this plan without then showing, here is the city budget. Here is what the city budget will be with less office and more houses. And then what are we gonna give up? And are, are we gonna make that money up somewhere? Else? Or are we gonna cut what? Because there will, I, I don't know, is it? Does the city make more money off of the taxes and everything associated with office space or res, or, or homes? I don't know, but it's all gonna have an impact. You squeeze one part of the balloon, it does something else elsewhere and whatever it is that happens, we should be prepared because we then have that. And it could be, I don't know which direction it would go.
I wonder if, and, and tell me if you don't think this is true, but I wonder if both what you just said, Peter, and what you just said, Sarah, are perhaps already adequately um, potentially contained in what we're asking for, because we're saying conduct a study. We're not saying directional, we're not saying what it's gonna be, what it's not gonna be, we're not saying what the desired outcome is, we're just saying go out, do some research, do some work, come back, tell me what might happen. Um, you know, and, and so maybe we don't need to get as fine-grained and, you know, potential outcomes. Maybe we're just saying, because also we don't know which way council's gonna vote. They might agree with some of us, disagree with others, whatever. We're just saying, hey, you as elected officials, ask planning board to make some recommendations. We think you need to conduct a study. You need to understand what's happening here and then they're gonna make the choices they make.
I'm good with that.
Lupita? Yeah, I was, I was gonna make, um, um, a mention because, yeah, if it's research, you're not supposed to know the answer. Otherwise, it is not research. So, yeah. We're gonna research this and find out what the outcome is. So the other one is about we were trying to tackle what we think are the biggest parameters for the problem that of imbalance that we face. And so we are gonna be exhausted. That's not the purpose. We wanna tackle the, I think one of, I think was maybe was, um, uh, Peter gained the most buck for your money, uh, by tackling the, the biggest, uh, uh, challenges we have. Um, and yes, I, I think that ultimately we just, we just need to know more so that not only council makes its decisions, and frankly, my dream is that uh, the community makes more decisions, better decisions. Um, so that we don't continue to contribute to this imbalance because of the way that we do not support affordable housing in our own neighborhoods or where we do not uh, support, you know, increased density when we need to have it. Uh, and, and that sort of thing, it, it goes for everyone. It's not just the elected officials. And they may have their own ideas, so by us bringing up these points to them, maybe they can incorporate our perspectives with what they have and we can do as a city a much better uh, job of addressing this. Uh, because we keep talking about the same topics, but when things has come up, you know, we just leave it for later, somebody else going to, uh, so we, it's good to bring it back up. Um, and let's hope that, um, we give him something to get, something good to get started with.
I, I think it may be important, although it may be a little insulting, so we can decide whether to put that in. But I think a lot of what we're talking about too is, I, I don't think any of us are desiring a specific outcome. And we need to make sure a study like this is conducted the right way, meaning an unbiased study. And there's a lot of political pushback in all kinds of directions around this type of stuff. So I, I would, I would, I would advocate for putting, conduct an unbiased study so it's clear that, you know, a lot of us, I think, voiced the last time about sort of deep politicizing all of this stuff. Um, and really just getting down to some facts that we can all work off of, because I think that's, that's what we're, we're all trying to do.
Right.
Um, and, you know, when we have upcoming planning board, you know, I, you know, appointments, I, I think all of us would like them not to be, you know, as political as possible. And I think a study like this, if it's truly unbiased um, and defensible that way, is gonna be helpful to the city and kind of de-escalating the politicization of, of all this stuff.
Yeah, great catch there to throw that word in.
All right.
Um, can I just make one grammatical thing on the, uh, bullet point about conducting a study? It should be, uh, conduct a study on rather than for.
Yeah, conduct an unbiased study on.
Okay, are we, um, can we go to page two? Okay. Um, I actually have a question for, um, uh, Charles, assuming he's still on the call. Are you there, Charles?
I'm still here, yeah.
Okay, great. Um, so in this, uh, the pending recommendation of the use table review subcommittee, I'm aware of the fact that in our last conversation about this, you were focused on the more technical updates. And I was thinking about the, um, materials that, um, came out of um, the, um, board members' discussion. Do we need to make it, do we, do, what do we need to make sure is clear in here? How do we make sure that what is clear here is that we're talking about the um, uh, the board members' recommendations rather than the, um, technical work that is already moving forward? What would your recommend, what would your suggestion be?
Um, I think that's just how you line it out. Um, you know, I think you can acknowledge the technical work that's happening. Uh, but prioritizing, uh, what came out of the board member conversation.
Okay. Um, what do you, just, Charles, what is it that the staff calls the technical work you're doing? Are you also calling it the use table review work?
Yeah, it's, uh, phase two.
Okay.
And so that's, you know, really kind of the technical formatting cleanups and edits to definition. The third phase of it would then be, um, implementation of the 25-minute or 20-minute neighborhoods, um, that was included in the last comp plan update.
Okay, so, um, can I, can we say this process builds on staff's technical updates and has resulted in creative ideas?
Sure.
Okay, so I'd like to just suggest that, I'm just trying to differentiate between these two components that are related but not the same. So Cindy, in that first, where it says pending recommendation number one, in the sec, the second sentence, this process, I would say, but after process, uh, this process, uh, uh, operate, was, let me think about this for a minute, this process uh, is separate from staff's technical review? And resulted in?
Tired.
Okay, and then, then I think we've at least indicated that it's two separate but related items. Okay.
Why are we calling that pending recommendation number one?
Because we sent it to, we sent it to city council last year.
Oh, so sorry, I got some dog howling going on here.
Previous recommendation, number one?
Previous is fine. Um, uh, but I, Charles, isn't it? Is it, is it something that is already, is, is the is the board's input already part of the work plan for the coming? Charles?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Sarah, can you repeat the question?
Sorry, is, the question was about using pending or some other verb, but is the, is the use table review subcommittee's proposals, which were, which were, uh, transmitted to council last year? Are they already incorporated into the work plan for this year? Is one of the items already in the work plan?
Yes.
Okay, so pending is accurate, correct?
Correct, yeah, it's, it's work that's in motion right now.
Okay. Anyone have any, um, comments, thoughts, grammatical edits? Content additions, subtractions?
I think you did a nice job on this.
Thank you. Lupita, and I thank you.
You plural, yes.
I like how much we got in under ostensibly a single recommendation.
You want me to go to the next page? Uh, does anyone have any comments on this?
Uh, are we on, I would, I'll do some fixing later, but sub-community and area, under how area plans can expand broad public engagement equity, sub-community and area plans enable.
Oh, thank you, yeah. grammatical edit. Okay. Um, shall we go to the last page? All right.
Um, vibrancy of such.
Wait, you want us to go back to something, Peter?
No, that's right, I caught it.
Okay. So, um, I actually agreed with, um, uh, with, uh, so the blues are, um, David's rec, David's suggestions. And I agree with him that, um, both disregarded was, um, awfully strong and seemed, um, sort of like a top to the hand kind of thing. Uh, so his suggestion was disagreed with. Um, and I, I'm perfectly comfortable with that. And I'm comfortable with softening it even more if somebody wants a softer word.
I, I think disagreed is fine. It, it makes the point without being offensive.
Yeah, I don't want to be offensive.
Oh, I see what he's done. Never mind.
You might want to put in there, Cindy, at the, underneath everything that's here, um, that we need a concluding paragraph.
In conclusion, we think you need to listen more closely to what we say.
Well. Do you all agree with the list of common concerns or are there other items? And, and/or are there other items that you'd like us to, that should be added to that list?
I, I, I don't know that it needs to be put in there, but I put it out there that I think most of us, if not all of us, have voiced concerns. This is less to do about Boulder and more to do, and maybe, maybe this is part of the concluding paragraph. The need for, um, cohesive planning. Um, and not a project by project sort of slice. I, I don't know how you put that in there, but I, I do think that that could be in the conclusion. Because I think that's what we face a lot. Lupita's words kind of always resonate with me about, you know, we're not the welcoming committee, we're the planning committee. And I think that that, but I think that that encapsulates a lot of what we're trying to, what this body is trying to do, is trying to be thoughtful about all of Boulder and how everything kind of links together. And that, that's the perspective that maybe council is not looking at as robustly because they have so much other else on their plate. When they spend, you know, an hour or two on a concept review that we've already spent, you know, three hours on, it just seems redundant and not that productive. Um, I don't suggest we put that in there, but.
Holistic, holistic, holistic planning?
Yeah.
Because they are the policymaking body and we are not. And so we, they need to, they need to be paying attention to it so that it can, it
Yeah, yeah.
Found a criteria that we can use. Those are trapped, like a holistic, what's the word for, uh, what you're saying, maybe?
And, and I think we could actually make that the first of the items on the list of common concerns, the need for holistic planning. Um, and just so you know, George, I had in the opening paragraph, as Lupita Montoya has said. And she took it out.
I felt kind of bad.
Because it is, we should all like have, uh, throw pillows made with that.
I get, that, that will go down in history.
So, um, I think, uh, Cindy, in the first paragraph on this page, where we, where after common concerns, uh, the first item, uh, should be holistic planning or uh, something, um, it's H-H-O-L-I, there's no W, H-O-L.
So Lynn Segal said integrative, so that's another option, but I think the whole thing is about, um.
You should not be looking at the, the comments, the.
I see.
Should not be reading that.
But, but, George, not George, Peter and John can fiddle around with that. But then, then we've, we've made, we keep bringing it back to the same issue, which is you can't get to these other things if you don't have a list holistic planning. Okay.
Yeah.
Other thoughts, Peter, John, George, Lisa, Lupita.
This is great.
I, I think we, we're making our points.
Okay.
So between Cindy's, not Cindy's document here, John's notes. The document that I have captured most of this on, I'll compare all three. Get to something that is a clean version.
I will send this document out to Peter and John after the meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Just a, a timing thing, our next meeting is the day after this is due. So I'm wondering, and this may be something that Hella has to guide us on. Can, can we, can we give a date by which? It gets sent out to all of us for one final look see. And then we can each just say yes and, and then send it to Cindy to hand over to. Who's ever putting the packet together for council? Hella.
Probably pushing it a little bit if you're all giving input on it. Are you, don't you think that you're far enough along to be comfortable with it being finalized by, by the two drafters you appointed?
I am.
I'm not going to make any substantive changes to anything.
Okay. Lisa, I saw you nodding, you're okay with that? Lupita, are you okay with that? George, are you okay with that? Okay, then we're all okay with that.
All right.
So you have to get it to Cindy no later than the EOB on the 15, end of business on the 15th. And I'm sure she would prefer it earlier than that.
I would actually prefer.
We're, we're right there, there's not a lot here left, so screening problem.
We'll be moving commas.
Oh, actually, I, I actually need to turn it in by noon on the 15th. I just checked. So no, it says no later than Wednesday, number 15th by noon.
Okay.
All right, well, Peter.
So let's say 9:00 AM on the 15th.
I think Peter and I want to get it out of our hair as quick.
Get it out.
So when you guys.
I have to get it out of my hair.
When you guys have it done and have sent to Cindy, Cindy, would you mind sending it out to all of us just so we have it for our records?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, that's awesome, okay. Let's see if I can come back on camera.
All right, we are still in. This item matters. Thank you, everyone, for that great exercise, that session. So we're still in, in item six, I'll hand it back to Cindy to help us coordinate the remainder of this portion of the meeting.
Thank you. So I've asked Jacob to join us just to address his departure from the city. Unfortunately, he has been tied up in another meeting, so I don't think that he's going to be able to join us unfortunately. I'm sure you all saw the press release that he is going to be departing the city, I believe tomorrow is his last day. So just wanted to see, you know. I mean, I don't know, Charles, if you have anything to add.
Yeah, and we're actively working on a transition plan as we speak and finalizing details of that. So that, that should actually be final tomorrow or Monday. And as soon as we have more information to share, we certainly will.
Well, would you please let him know? That we wish him the best and we are, I am very, I'm so sad he's leaving, he's been awesome.
Yeah. We'll definitely pass that along.
Please do, and I'm sure all of us can appreciate the, the new landscape here with. The absence of long range planner and the workload that's already been assumed. And now this workload, and so please let us be helpful where we can. We're a team, this is a new, we're in a new world here. And so we do our thing, you do your thing, sometimes. We, we, we don't know what each other's things are totally, so help us be like, hey, remember. I normally, we would do that, but now that's going to be harder and it's not me, not me saying no, and I'm sure we'll hear you, so. Don't let us accidentally make this any harder than it needs to be over the next bit.
We appreciate that. Are there any other, are any matters from the city attorney? Oh, Sarah, I'm sorry.
I have a matter. I talked, I had a communication with Hella, which was about. The idea, a discussion around. Members of the public disclosing if they have financial relationships with applicants. And we don't, I don't, from what I, from the communication I had with Hella, it doesn't seem like we have. The city has a lobbying law, you know, a sunshine law on that. But I did want to at least put out on the table a discussion, we don't have to make a decision anytime soon. But does it make sense to request? That members of the public. Let us know if they have a financial arrangement with an applicant, the same way we are required to make. Such knowledge public. And Hella was going to take a look into what that might entail. I don't know if you had a chance to do that or not.
Yeah, I haven't actually had a chance to spend more time on it, Sarah, I apologize. I just was on vacation and I'm digging myself back out of emails.
Okay, I mean, there's no.
We can get back, we can get to it soon and maybe, and maybe we can schedule it at one of our upcoming meetings.
Okay.
So this is, just to understand the concern, this is, you know. Is this like, you know, someone who's a citizen of Boulder? Who might be being, be a paid consultant by the developer in some form or fashion. And advocating for something as a citizen, but we don't really understand what their ties might be.
Yeah, and it's just, it's, it's not meant to be punitive, it's just helpful to understand. I mean, I'm, I'm remembering the Marpa House situation where we heard, overheard someone say. I made my hundred dollars and now, you know, now I want to hear what happens to the rest of the meeting. And I don't think that happens very often, but it does. If there are financial relationships between a citizen, I mean, a resident who is speaking to us. And an applicant or the applicant's team, it's just helpful to note. I'm not trying to silence anyone, it's just helpful to know.
And I think another thing that I like about that potentially is, it just makes it explicit that you should be disclosing that. You know, people may or may not, you know, but you know, it makes it explicit that if, if there is such a relationship or something of value has exchanged hands. That led to whatever, then that is something that ought to be disclosed. You know, and I think it puts it on record that that's the case, and I like that.
Peter, do you have any thoughts about that? Is it something that would interest you for further not get some more information from Hella?
I like it, I like when we have paid, you know, when there are attorneys representing. Groups, we know it. And I think. I'm sure there are best practices in place in other cities that we could look to. For this type of thing, and that's, I think that's all you're asking is clarity. I don't, I think what happened. Did, did a disservice to everyone involved in the process. Created a scenario that. Absorbed energy in a way that took away from what we're trying to do and, and raised questions and. Put doubt into the process, which is the last thing we need.
Go ahead, Hella, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just put it in. But Sarah and I discussed a little bit was that, that it's got to be neutral so that there's no appearance of bias by any of the questions you ask. I think it is a legitimate question because you're trying to determine the value of the testimony that's being given, the personal knowledge. And if there are any potential biases. And it could be on, on part of the applicant, but it could also be on part of somebody else who's speaking. So if we create a requirement of some kind of disclosure at the beginning of testimony. It should kind of be a broad statement that applies to everybody.
John, did you have any reaction or thought?
Oh, I, I think it's a good idea, I support your, your proposal on that.
Okay, so I guess then, I know everyone's really burdened and everyone has a lot to do. But it can be sort of a pending discussion and project that Hella can bring back to us at some point.
Yeah, I was thinking I was gonna think of what language that might be then, that you ask at the beginning of the testimony.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, that was my matter.
And just, just, just one other thing out there that I've noticed being. The ex-fascio in regards to landmarks, that they always, it's a bit different, but I, I found it interesting because it's something that we don't do. They, they, they always, they always ask for the truth in, in all of their testimony and every one of. They had to swear Lynn Segal in four times last night. Every time she spoke that she was representing the truth. I don't know that we need to go there, but I, I did find it interesting that there was a difference in the way that that board handles the public versus us. So anyways, I just thought it was interesting that they're already out there asking for certain things. Which is, this is not a whole lot different than that, just a little bit different flavor.
That's awesome, thanks so much, George. Back to you, Peter, or back to.
If that concludes. Item six, we're now in item seven, debrief, calendar check. Cindy, do you have anything for us?
Well, we have a meeting, our last meeting of the year will be on December 16th. We do have a public hearing that evening. It's a site and use review for 1820 15th Street and 1603 Walnut. Combined, so site and use review that night. So last minute of the year. And that's all I have.
All right.
I think, I had something else, but I don't think I did, I think of the latter, so.
Does anyone have any other items on debrief? Feels like.
From staff.
Thank you. Like we had a chance to kind of slowly debrief the last few items. Well, everybody.
Peter, you did awesome.
Nice job, Peter.
Yeah, softball.
Thank you.
My Egyptian brother.
Hey, Peter, you and I will be in touch then in the next few days, I guess.
Yes, let's do that, let's exchange the docs tomorrow and then try to, you know, knock this thing out by Tuesday maybe.
Get it done.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
No problem, Cindy. All right, y'all, have a wonderful evening.
Everybody, thanks everyone, thanks again.
Is a John. Bye.